Brian is destroying it.
He has a hand, isn't he? Okay, how does that play?
Yeah, sorry.
One hundred and fifty. I'm going to come back, do that. Right, so we're ready to start then?
Yeah, okay. Hello, welcome to the School Council meeting on Wednesday 22nd of July at 7 o'clock. The agenda is for the inauguration procedure in event of a power draw by the emergency signal or a continuous pounding of the power. Please leave the room by the exit door indicator symbol of the meeting party area. That's obviously put in the public, in the council, obviously. Secondly, filming and recording of the meeting. Are we recording on that one? No, we're not recording here. If anybody else wants to declare that we're actually recording, it would be nice.
Yeah, I will be recording.
Okay, so we've got recording there. Submissions from the public. Is the next part? Any submissions from the public? It's not on the agenda. No?
No.
Is it? Okay, so it doesn't appear to be any submissions from the public. So, next item number two, do you receive any apologies perhaps?
No, haven't received any.
Those who may be very chequered upon Brian, not related tonight or tomorrow morning.
Brian, please say.
Not big upon Brian, I meant Roger.
Oh.
Right, applications for dispensation by council.
Yes, I have one, which is the remaining one that was done in May. That is for councillor Ed Road. A dispensation is requested to be able to speak and vote on budget and precept setting matters from 20th of May 2020 until the 19th of May 2021.
Okay, any more dispensation?
We need a proposal, second for that, please.
Can we propose, somebody propose?
I can propose, yeah?
Yeah, second.
Thank you, please. And we take a vote on that, please.
Those in favour?
All of you.
Ben?
Yes, Ben.
Yeah, lovely, yeah, thank you. Keith, yeah, marvelous, thank you, that's unanimous.
Fine, right. Declaration by members under Local Government Act 1972. The declaration? No, no, okay, the announcement from the chair. The only thing I'd like to announce is that due to the situation where we've stopped this coronavirus situation, we've had to cancel the fun festival this year. Dell has come up with a brilliant idea that we perhaps have a scarecrow trail where we can actually do this whether we're in a true lockdown or not, because one, it takes five, two, likely to be family members, family household, it could do this. I will approach certain people for sponsorship and detail, I think, will be coming out to everybody shortly. Dell wants to say anything at this moment?
Hi there, no, I'm just sort of in the middle of working out spreadsheet. So, we've so far got three entries, because obviously we've contacted some of the schools and luckily today has the three responses, so it looks like it might be quite a big thing, so.
Yeah. If someone's not familiar with this, it's similar to the ones in Gromit, things that they did in Bristol and Bath and two other towns. And they've done this scarecrow trail in various other parises, certainly in Southgloss. And it's something that the community can get involved with at a very low cost and could very easily involve for the mayor's charity, as has likely to be depleted this year. Further information will come out shortly.
Sorry, can I just say, for paying in for October half term?
We're looking at October half term. We've got a sponsor for the all schools went to be of charge, thirty ten pound per inch of scarecrow and we need about thirty five companies, schools, businesses, whatever, to participate to make a nice thing round the town. So, yeah, we'll move on and there's more paperwork to come out in the near future.
Can you just announce your mayor's charities?
All right, the main charities, it's up on the website, but I'm going to continue with the Great Western Air Ambulance and also Next Link, which is a domestic abuse charity and that's a little bit more prevalent in the lockdown scenario, plus it's very close to my own particular family. So, that's the two charities for this year. Okay, and then the next item number six is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 8th of July as a record.
Yeah, I'll propose this, Chair.
Well, they will be offering.
Okay.
Michael, seconded.
So, those in favour, show hands. Some people ready? Tom, are you playing on this one?
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Is that unanimous?
Yeah.
I would hear.
All right.
If you could keep your hands up for a second, the lines, sorry, challenge comes in.
Ben, are you in favour for the next? Yes, yes, I love. Okay, thank you, so must go and speak and just finish left and right, we'll just find it back.
All right then.
And I've got pen. Finish left and right and then come and go.
Any like? Seems like one described some reason, yeah. Does anyone think in the two minutes, not a link? But you want to click on it and say, you know, I think when they come play it happens.
No, I don't think.
You can try that and say, can you try and try and?
But I also sent emails which had the link. If you click on it in your email, you should be able to click on it with the link. I will join the instruction, there's email.
If you don't get one, could you record us a point?
I will, of course, the police, certainly, yeah.
Sharon, I couldn't find the link, I had to put it in the browser bar.
Okay, because I did send an email through which had all the joining instructions on it and has the link on that.
Yeah, I had it, Sharon, that's how I got on this.
Yeah, so.
Put the pump things in there.
Yeah.
The easiest way is to just go onto the Braggis Oak website and go to meetings and it says what the meeting is today and you open it up and you go straight on the link and that's what I did. So, I looked on emails first and I must not, I couldn't find it, so.
No, I didn't. That's in the word document, that's why.
It's on the front page of the agenda document.
Yeah, it is, yeah, I use that on the browser bar, bit of a pain because it's so long.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I tried that as well, got it wrong. So, I went on the website again for the second time, because it's got lots of minutes on there and meetings from previous, but you've got to go down to the current meeting, so.
If you actually go, if you log on through the internet onto Zoom and then just put in the meeting ID and password on join the meeting, you can do it through that way as well.
Ah, right, okay.
And then we'll have to go through it all again in a minute for planning, won't we?
Well, indeed, yes.
Don't make the Zoom app onto your laptop.
An hour's time.
There's doing the meeting and it gives you the numbers.
Yeah, it would be easier, but of course, Southgloss are telling us not to download Zoom.
Yeah, that's how I understand.
Well, it ruined my camera on my computer. I can't use, yeah, I've had to put an auxiliary camera on.
That's probably what's happened to mine now.
It's messed a lot of people's cameras up. There's some kind of virus or something, it's affecting, it's affecting the, well, the whole system.
Can you move on now?
Luckily, I've found out, but we only had to use the camera now.
Hey, well, Roger, thank you for joining us.
Not yet.
He's still just sitting.
Yeah, yeah, welcome, Roger, where is he? There he is. Welcome, Roger, you've gotten it off. Right then, let's move on to deal with any matters of writing from those minutes that we've just approved, any matters of writing. Then we come to, I think, the main item, which is to.
Chair, I had a question on the fun fair, is it on or off?
We haven't got to that decision yet, that they've been allocated to measure amenities on the same sheet of order.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I know it was ending still, so, yeah, that's all right.
So, the item eight is twenty nine, twenty two, eight point two, nineteen twenty. Seven, one, page four. Can you read something?
Yes, we've all got to go through that.
So, hopefully you're all ready.
So, if I read out, shall I read out? Yeah, well, so the, following the, all the relevant 2019, twenty annual return audit documentation has been circulated to councillors. So, the first one, we approved the annual government statement, which is on section, in section one, which is page four of the document you got. So, if you're not sure, for anyone who's new, who's not necessarily sure which one it is. Can you see that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Not sure how clear that is actually, but that's the annual government's accountability return. So, following council's internal governance inspection on the 21st of February 2020, and the minutes for that is on the back of your written sheet. Members included the position and felt that strong governance internal and risk management control is in place. So, following receipt of the successful internal audit, council can confirm that it positively meets the requirements of all sections of the 2019 annual government statement, section one.
This has got to be proposed, yes?
Yeah, we need proposed, second and vote.
Oh, proposed, okay.
John Asher's proposing it, anybody?
Second, Chair.
Keith, I think?
Keith?
Yeah.
Those in favour, show hands, please.
Roger?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's unanimous, all right, thank you.
Eight point two.
Okay, so eight point two is to approve the 2019, twenty accounting statements in section two, which is on page five, actually, can you, if you get, if you get in the sign, if you go along, yes. Sorry, we just pause for a second while we get the, whether we've got the name signed by the chair. I find that, yeah. So, the next one is to approve the 2019, twenty accounting statement in section two, which is page five of the document. So, taking the above into account and following further consideration, including the accounting and financial reports, which have been the finance committee throughout the year, together with the final year-end figures, which were presented to due finance, council can confirm that it positively meets the requirements of all sections of the 2019, twenty accounting statement, which is section two.
Hopefully that is the financial.
So, one, I propose.
About the second.
Yeah, go, Chair.
I think Terry could have just skipped in there.
Yeah, that's all right.
Can we take a vote on that, please councillor, all those in favour?
Yeah.
Paul, is that in there?
Paul, is it, yeah?
Marvelous, that's lovely, that's absolutely unanimous, thank you very much. Have a good minute, while we just get that piece paper signed.
And eight point three, received the 1920 annual internal audit report, page three.
Right, so the, this is just to receive it, because obviously this is what's been done by Southglossshire Council. 2019 internal audit report was received. Members reminded that council has already received a high rate of mid-year internal audit in February 2020 and Southglossshire Council internal audit services have now also given a clear year-end annual internal audit as detailed of page three of the annual return. That's just been received, but that's not, all the ones we signed, yeah.
Still a bit of food?
No, I just received that one.
And eight point four, document date set for the period, the public vote.
So, obviously, we have to, not, yeah, I forget that, sorry. Yeah, so we have to expedite, we have to add, sorry, we have to put up a statutory notice giving the dates of public inspection for our accounts. So, council, we're advised of the dates, the period of the public notice, which would be Monday the 27th of July until Tuesday 7th of September 2020. These dates comply with the statutory audit requirements and the notice will be placed on council's website and notice boards, so we need a proposal.
I propose, I propose it, yeah?
Already been done, Tom?
It's Monday the 7th.
I had that there, I think you're, it's okay, it doesn't matter.
It's Monday the 7th of September, doesn't it?
One of the questions, already, I travel, Chair, the question is, how will they inspect the accounts? How is the exercise?
What do you mean?
Whether they have come to the office or how is the social?
Everything, all the documentation will be on our website, but we will also have hard copies, which we can hand out to people if they come to the office, so, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Sorry, John, John, seconded.
Yeah. Yeah, well, just get his name on the sheet.
Right, can we take a vote on that, please councillor?
Those in favour, like to share hands? What?
Roger?
Yeah.
Did I, did you put, yeah, look, and Keith, yeah, brilliant, that's right, everyone in here, yes? Thank you very much. Right?
Okay, I think I have. Yeah, it's recorded, yeah, that's good.
So, now we move on to the, sorry.
Number nine.
Yeah.
To adopt and sign the 2019 financial statement.
Okay, so that is the large wedge of papers that you had, which is entitled Braggis Oak Town Council Unaudited Financial Statement for Year Ended 31st of March 2020. So, that is the one, that's the one that once it's been agreed, but then it's been missed.
Did you not let us have the binders this time because you didn't think you'd get them all back?
Sorry?
Did you not let us have the binders because you wouldn't get them back?
Well, I'm just brave on postage, but yeah, it was quite a bulky pack we didn't put out, yeah, because normally you get it in a fancy folder with a binder and plastic covers, don't you? But, yeah, no, we've, we've. Come down, Mark, put these here. Yeah, although actually, we recycle everything, it all comes back in and then goes out the following year, but yeah. We need a proposal on the second, have a look.
Propose this, please.
John, can I ask a question first? Hello? I think, God, not, page sixteen, we're talking about six asset valuation, okay? There's two methods we're doing, that are the basic class for current market value. Down the bottom here, it says, the county's properties were valued at 31st of March 2008 of valuation, you know, quite a while ago, that's when it started, it's got, it's got. And not all properties were inspected. I mean, he didn't agree with the world to really absolutely re-buy the properties again and the, the, I think, and they just put them to their own danger. I think 2008 is one of the ways you have asked over.
So, which page was it?
Page sixteen, the notes here, okay? If you look down the bottom, there's six asset valuations, okay? It doesn't actually say which method they use, whether it's currency placement class or market value.
Yeah, that's not, we have had, we've had them done since then, I'm sure, yeah.
I think they were all done last year.
Yeah, they were.
So, that might be, it might be a typo. Unless they're not, that way.
Yeah, I think that that might be as at 30th of March 2018.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty sure that they, that we have definite, and Terry said, yeah.
I remember Rachel saying, and I believe.
Yeah, we will check, but we're pretty sure it was starting to happen. Yeah, no, there's no way it would be confirmed, I'm pretty sure it's, yeah, it's a typo being done, but, right?
Thank you, Roger. So, we need to get somebody to present it.
I'll propose, Tony. The way, I think.
Two seconds, Roger. We have both pages, all those in favour? Marvelous, yeah, that's unanimous, thank you, so, yeah, you can, you must get that signed, very quick, a second.
All of the pages on this that have got to be signed, yeah?
Yes, because then we move on to the. Right? Yeah, that's a good point, actually, yeah. Because that would be fine, we can find that, yeah, on the. Yeah, lovely.
Okay, the number, item ten is to accept and sign the following report. Ten point one is 2019, twenty bank reconciliation.
So, you have that in your agenda pack? Can I propose that keeps that?
Yeah, and did that do seconded? This will do, yeah, go on. Got all this in favour, show hands, please. Bank reconciliation. Is Boris going to run it or is he going to do it?
Well, because everybody else is in favour, yeah? And down to the states, I'm not sure. Yeah. Right, thank you.
So, ten point two is the 2019, twenty reconciliation between boxes seven and eight of the annual term.
Yeah, again, then you have that in your agenda pack? Yeah, again, then you have that in your agenda pack? So can we have a proposal or second of the reconciliation?
I pro, I propose.
All second.
It's my favourite line, yeah, all second.
Show of hands, please. That's fine, that's fine. Yeah, uh, ten point three is the twenty nineteen twenty explanation of variance between the figures in the annual report and the current and previous years.
That's with all the things with yellow on it, and actually, there are no, um, variances because everything, the plus and minus are below fifteen percent or below the, the amount you actually have to put an exclamation on.
I have a proposal for these.
Okay.
I was okay.
Oh, hang on, we've got lots of people called up. Terry, Roger, I think both proposed at the same time, so.
I think Terry sneaked in, couldn't he, but would you like to second it?
I was okay.
Sorry, thank you, Roger, just sneaked in there.
Can we take a vote on that, please?
Put that up on the screen, you know? There's a data, there's all the data. Definitely.
Long way down here, just that one extension then, and another in favour.
Can I just make an observation? I think those proposed in seconding, uh, are actually incidents. Uh, it needs to have an understanding of what they actually mean, perhaps give us a little thought. Do them, just to convince us that they do understand what they mean. Just an, just an observation.
Sorry, Roger, but can you speak up, please?
I think that, um, councillors who are proposing and seconding things, um, to ensure they have an understanding of what they're actually proposing and seconding. Obviously, it's just making it as a classification, I think.
Hearing is away.
Right, so now on item eleven. Let's see, uh, eleven point one, twenty nineteen twenty internal governance inspection. Any comments on that, Erin? Sorry, Sharon?
I don't know.
We're on number eleven?
Yeah, it's financial, Michael, approved, direct evidence for payment.
We're reading out ten point three. Oh, you're not understanding, you're going to get the other one. It's not willing to hold up, that's all.
Well, that's ten point three, yeah, and then it's eleven.
On the back, it's eleven.
But that's what Roger, man.
Hey, that, that is old.
That is the minute from the page before.
Yeah.
That, um, we have one here, three minutes over leave, so that's the new, uh, yeah, so, no, yeah.
So we've done all the, um, option of the finance. Well, this is number ten. Eleven point eleven, there you go. Ten point one is to create a bill of direct payment. From the, from the, of the sheet.
On the office printer, voluntary. It saves a lot of money for the thirty four pound.
That's.
That could buy a printer, yeah?
Um, no, that's our, that's our big printer, that wouldn't buy a printer, so that is, I like it, the, um.
What says voluntary, is that service contract?
Yeah, so that, yeah, so if it breaks down, they'll come in within twenty four hours and fix it.
Is that the one here?
Yeah. It's the big office human.
Is it older?
Not big old, but it's a big machine, yeah, it does everything. It's not just the printer, like you have, it does.
And do you get charges on top of that for copying?
Um, we do for, I'm not sure, is that the, is that the colour one or is that?
Is this a printer that does all the original?
It does everything, yeah, so it is, yes, extended parts, the one too, it is, yeah.
So do we, do we get charged per sheet as well?
Yeah, we do get another, um. Is that a black and white one or is that colour one? Um, you see, it's two, ladies. The black and white one, yeah. So that, that does include, we do get charged for copying, but we don't pay the ink cartridges for that one. Yeah, so we, we do, we get paid charged with separate, which you get every quarter, I think it is, the invoice for the actual printing that we do, but we don't have to buy the cartridges for that, they're included, they come in with a cost thing, so.
What, what print is to go to?
Auto digital network, auto digital network.
Who to?
Auto digital, it says on the top of the, uh, thing map.
Oh, we see, I see.
That is not the service, not that, that.
That's the warranty for if it breaks down on your part, but then we also, we don't have to, we don't have to buy any cartridges. We've got a contract written for that, we pay a certain amount per copy.
And I sort of like expect in service machines, how far we're through it, so.
Um, I'm pretty sure it's probably been, we've probably had it about, I don't know, definitely. I'm not to say, whether it's news since I've been there, but it's a good few years old.
Just one versus other, it's worth actually looking at putting the money rather than wanting to start. Looking at possibility of buying a more bottom one.
I think, I think it's worth us looking at during this year, it's the huge one, it does all the stapling, the double siding, the. Yeah, it would cost a hell of a lot of money to.
And the likes of things, like, right, and. Or way, way up in here, moving, so, we're going to.
Yeah.
It's a proper profession, yeah.
Yeah, um, but it might be, if we get spare parts in this, there can, might be work looking at whether we can amalgamate and have one printer that does everything, rather we.
Just by, in respect, as you're looking at the search on that, and the warranty you're buying new printers. And then if you can buy new printers that don't have those associated charges, or they're not as much, you would have those contacts against them, so that's when you're looking to do something. It's, it's a case of near or you pay on the new printer.
It's a question of what they're supposed to, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
But if you're getting, the value comes obviously in that, the, the, the.
Yeah. And what, our cartridges are and hanging, get to the issue as well.
Do we actually own this machine, do we?
Yeah.
As I said, you can actually hire.
Yeah, so, yeah, you can. I think definitely it's worth looking at, at some stage this year, but again, it's, you know, it's going to take quite a lot of work.
We're going to get a printer issue, and I don't think so.
Yeah, because, yeah.
So the last, have we approved this, Phil? Proposal from Ben, seconded by.
myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, sneaking there. Uh, those in better.
Tom, you're in, Becca.
I'm sorry, Tom's got his hand up, but he's not good.
That is unanimous one, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on then to the last item, which is the date of the next, the council meeting, December then, twenty at seven o'clock. And we've got a meeting, please.
Yeah. I'm going to end this meeting, and then if you go in five minutes, I will then, um, start the next meeting.
Sharon, any chance of you sending over a link?
I can do, I can send you the email again.